नम्मतले वनिंगी जम्मसैयो ननालियन देवन तुदि आराधने अवर एट्टुकुल्लमडी देवेलेल्या देवन तुमरे एर्थितन भारते नमक अवर तरिप्रथमडिक्यो ननाल ओभोरु पगजय्यम देवन नमक आश्रव्यत्रिंदा आराधने नमक आश्रव्यतमाकी तर्मडिक्यो नम्मिल ओरुवर सत्तत विर्तिनाम देवन तरले जम्मसैयो सगोदरगिल दायसैथ कोणज मुन्नाडीर्क्रे चारण गणपिड़ुने पिन्नाडी वर्ण प्लीज ब्रेस्ट कोणज मुन्नाडीले चारण नर्पिड़ुने वैधान रुलकु पिन्नाडी वर्ण उल्क अडम्डाकटो नम्मुनिंग मुन्नाडीले लल्ला चारण नर्पिरल्ला ओके नम्म पाडल पाडु नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नल्लअवर यसु नमक सेदर्क्रे लल्ला नन्मेगले नम्म निनित्त देवेली नांडोरे नम्मुल नंद्रियाल नरेंद नम्मु तुदिक्कुल्लम नुसल्ली देवेली नम्म देवन नम्म सोतरिप
नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते आहा नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते सिंगडल दणिनडुवाह पिरित्त इंगल देवनिल करमी सिंगडल दणिनडुवाह पिरित्त इंगल देवनिल करमी कांगिय रेय नारवरेयु नयवाय मादयवा आहा नयवाय मादयवा कांगिय रेय नारवरेयु नयवाय मादयवा आहा नयवाय मादयवा नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते आहा नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते ऊयत्तित्त ऊयत्तिनारुन्नदम उडन सुदन निरराय इरुके ऊयत्तित्त ऊयत्तिनारुन्नदम उडन सुदन निरराय इरुके किर्वयिल मगदानमलुवलु कालंकलिल निरंगे आहा कालंकलिल निरंगे किर्वयिल मगदानमलुवलु कालंकलिल निरंगे आहा कालंकलिल निरंगे नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते आहा नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते सीवन ध्यागमाय वैकपल तडुप सेवयिल मरिता सीवन ध्यागमाय वैकपल तडुप सेवयिल मरिता सिंधुवंदु सेवय पुइंदु सुंदिलादिनिपो आहा सुंदिलादिनिपो सिंधुवंदु सेवय पुइंदु सुंदिलादिनिपो आहा सुंदिलादिनिपो नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते आहा नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते अळक्य पट्टोरिणि उन्नद अळपिणि हरिंदे वंदिडुवी अळक्य पट्टोरिणि उन्नद अळपिणि हरिंदे वंदिडुवी अळविल्ला तिराक मिरणे अवनियो कडिप्पी आहा अवनियो कडिप्पी अळविल्ला तिराक मिरणे अवनियो कडिप्पी आहा अवनियो कडिप्पी नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते आहा नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते सीओने पणिंदुमि किरिस्तेस्त राजन सीकिरम भरुवा सीओने पणिंदुमि किरिस्तेस्त राजन सीकिरम भरुवा सिंदईवै पोम संदिकेवे सीओनिन राजनए आहा सीओनिन राजनए सिंदईवै पोम संदिकेवे सीओनिन राजनए आहा सीओनिन राजनए नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नंद्रियाल पाडिडो नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते आहा नल्लअवर ईसु नजळिय यल्ला नन्मेगले इनिनत्ते
प्रिपाडल नम्म गेलंद निरपडु नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवी एन कोठैयुम अरणुमाय इर्के नान अडैकलम पुगुंदिडुवी पुंगलीले इर्प्पवर परियवर अवर परिसुत्तमानवर अवर नम्मी काठिडुवार नुन्न नडत्तिडुवा नित्य कालमेल्ला अवर्डे वालीले नम्म नडत्तुमडिक्या अवर वांझविल अवर अर्कर नम्मे काक्र अवर उरंगोदुमिल्ले तूंगोदुमिल्ले उबट देवनी नान अडोरे नम्म इल्ला सुन्नलीलु उम्मी नम्बिक्यो मुद्दमिल्ले इरुकुम अडोरेंसु नान देवनी नम्बी नसोतिल नान बयपडुम नालीनिले
नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवे नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवे इल कोठैयुम अरणुमाय इर्के नान अडैकलम पुगुंदिडुवे इल कोठैयुम अरणुमाय इर्के नान अडैकलम पुगुंदिडुवे नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवे अवर काठिडुवा इन्नुन्न नडत्तिडुवा नित्य कालमेल्ला नम्मै अवर काठिडुवा इन्नुन्न नडत्तिडुवा नित्य कालमेल्ला नम्मै नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवे नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवे इल कोठैयुम अरणुमाय इर्के नान अडैकलम पुगुंदिडुवे इल कोठैयुम अरणुमाय इर्के नान अडैकलम पुगुंदिडुवे नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवे नम्मै काप्पवर अयर्वनिल्ले उरंगुवदुमिल्ले नम्मै काप्पवर अयर्वनिल्ले उरंगुवदुमिल्ले अवर आलयत्तिल नान अवयमित्ते एन कूपिडुदल अवसेवीनिले अवर आलयत्तिल नान अवयमित्ते एन कूपिडुदल अवसेवीनिले नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवे नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवे इल कोठैयुम अरणुमाय इर्के नान अडैकलम पुगुंदिडुवे इल कोठैयुम अरणुमाय इर्के नान अडैकलम पुगुंदिडुवे नान बयपडुम नालीनिले कत्तरे नम्बिडुवे
देवेली नाम कंगलीमोडी कणन नाटकल मुरुजुम नम्मले पादत्तु वंदा देवनै इल्ला सुलिनिल्लुम अवर नमक पोजमान अवराय अवर नल्लअवराय अवर वल्लमयुल देवनाय नम्मे वाल्कीले इर्न्दर्क्रा अवर्डे संधकुमारनी नमकागत तंदु नम्मतले अन्तुसरित्न देवनाय इर्क्रा ननालीले नाम निरपदुम नर्वलम आहाद रिकदुम अवर्डे सुत्त कृपा इर्कदु अडोरे नम्मे इरक्कम डे किरुवै नाल वरेंगे तांगी वैल्नाट्ट वंदर्क्र तर्क नंद्रिय अडोरे तिनालुम नम्म सभैकुडियोर्मडियाय गुलकु निर्कृपी पाराट्टी रिक्री नम्मुकु नंद्रिय नुकुड़े नम्म इल्लार्माय सेयंदु नम्म अडोरु किलन्नडिगले इस रुतु नंद्रिय अडोरे
निन्दनैगल पोराट्टम वंदुम निरियिन देवन तांगिनारे निन्दनैगल पोराट्टम वंदुम निरियिन देवन तांगिनारे नेसकोडी एनमल परक नेसरुकाय जीवितिडुवे नेसकोडी एनमल परक नेसरुकाय जीवितिडुवे नम्बुवे यसुवै नम्बुवे यसुवै नम्बुवे यसुवै नम्बुवे यसुवै काकुम करंगल उण्डनेके काठिडुवा किर्वयाले काकुम करंगल उण्डनेके काठिडुवा किर्वयाले अल्लेलोया पाडी पाडी अलैगले नान तांडिडुवे अल्लेलोया पाडी पाडी अलैगले नान तांडिडुवे नम्बुवे यसुवै नम्बुवे यसुवै
देवेलील्लम रुस सगोरुनुम रुस सगोदरियु अडोरे तुदित्त देवेले अडोरु किलन्नडिस्वतल्लम नल्लपितावे नंदोडुम तुदिक्करोम अडोरे कत्तावे मतुमाय निरिंगले काठ्त वैल्नाट्ट वंदा देवुकाय नंदिस्वतल्लुतुरो ननालीलुम अडोरे निरिंगलोडुपुड़ पेसुम्बडियाय नम्म चबिक्करो अडोरे इल्ला तुदिक्कुम गणत्यर्कुम निर्पात्रराय इर्क्री नम्म नंदिने नेंद्र इरियोत्तोरुकुड़ अडोरे नम्म समुदले कुड़िवंदुल्लो अडोरे निरित्त केट्र वार्तेले तांग अडोरे नम्मल मनत्तुर्ब बेंडिया अवुदय निर्मतिले निर्कान्बिक्याय नुमाय नम्म चबिक्करो निर्मतिले पेसिविडुन अडोरे पेसिक्राय दासरी निराविषय कित्त वैल्नाट्ट वंदियाय नम्म चबिक्करो इल्ला यसु नम्मतिल मुरुंज चबिकरो पितावे अमीन अमीन ओकरो निर्गिनमके पेशेल मीटिंग उंडु वेलुर त्रिच्छवीन एल्लर ब्रदर जोसफ़्करिला ब्रदर अडोरम वार्ते नम्मतिले पैन्दु गुलवर जानविस्ली राजा अरे ट्रांस्टेट पन्नवर पत्ताम्बादुकु रुस सेजी इरुकु अल्लबला 12:00 की 2व्हत सेशन रुकु नम्म अडोरे अडोर्डे वार्ते बयपत्तिडुन केपु सगोरुरुम सगोरुरु नम्मतिले वंदर्क्र करार्गल नम्म तंजावत्र सभिसार्वागे केसेस नम्मलम्मले वरै इरुक्रम्म अडोरु वार्ते नम्म केकल्ल
इट इस टच अ ग्रेट जॉय तू बी हेयर इट इस इस टच अ जॉय तू बी हेयर
निंगे वंदरपदे नक्क मिन्द मगलची
आफ्टर सम टाइम आई एम कमिंग हेयर
सिला कालत रिकु पिरेकु नानिंग वरिरे
यस्टरडे आई वस हेयर फॉर डी ब्रदर्स मीटिंग
नेट नानिंग सगोदर कुड़िकाहांगे इर्न्दे
आई वांट तू शेयर विथ यू सम्मिंग डेट डी लॉर्ड वस स्पीकिंग तू माय ओन हार्ट फॉर डी लास्ट फ्यू वीक्स
कणन सिला वारंगलागे इनुड एदेत्तरुके देवन तामे पेसियस सिला कार्यंगले उंगलोडुकुड़ नान पकिन्दुकुल्ला परिविकरे
वी विल हैव टू सेशन्स इन डी मॉर्निंग
नम्मके काले इरण्ड सेशन गल उंडु
एंड डी फर्स्ट सेशन
मुदल कोटम
एंड देन डी सेकंड सेशन विल बी अ अकंटिन्यूएशन ऑफ डी फर्स्ट सेशन
इरण्डावत कोटम अन्द मुदल कोटरीन तोडर्चियाहाक इरुकु
फर्स्ट ऑफ ऑल आई वांट तू शो डिस वर्स इन फर्स्ट कोरिंदियन्स चैप्टर वैन
मुदलावतागे नान उंगलुके इन्द वसनत्तै कान्बिक्यावरिंबिकरे वन्नु कोरिंदियर वन्त्राम अधिकारम
वर्स 18 इट्स सेज
18 मसनत्तिले इवार सल्लपट रिकिरद
डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस इस तू डोस व्हो आर पेरिशिंग फुलिशनेस बट वस व्हो आर बीइंग सेव्ड इट इस डी पॉवर ऑफ गॉड
सिल्वेय पच्चिय उपदेशम केटुपोहिर अवर्गलकु पाइत्यमाय इरिकिरद रचिक्य पडिकर नमको अद्देव बलनाय इरिकिरद
इट्स अ अमेजिंग वर्स
इद्दी मिहुम रुस आचरियमान रुस वसनम
सेज डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस हस गोट टू इफेक्स
निंगे सल्लपट रिकिरद सिल्वेय पच्चिय उपदेशस्तरुके इरण्ड इरण्ड पलंगल वरिकिरद
आइदर इट इस हेल्पिंग सम पीपल और इट इस हार्मिंग सम पीपल
वन्नु असिला मणिरकु उदविसईकिरद अल्लद असिला मणिरकु वरु कष्टै कोडिकिरद केडलाई कोडिकिरद
एंड वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस इस फुलिशनेस तू सम पीपल
सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशम सिल्वरकु पाइत्यमाय इरिकिरद
एंड फॉर सम पीपल इट इस डी पॉवर ऑफ गॉड
सिलरको अद्देव वल्लमयाय इरिकिरद देव बलनाय इरिकिरद
एंड इफ यू कंसिडर डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस आस अ फुलिश थिंग देन यू विल पेरिश
निंगल सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशस्तै पाइत्यमाह एनिनाल निंगल केटुपोवीर
रोन डी अदर हैन इफ यू टेक डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस आस दिस इस डी पॉवर ऑफ गॉड देन यू विल हैव सल्वेश
आनल इनोरुपकमो निंगल देवनुडे वार्ताय निंगल सिल्वेय पट्ट उपदेशस्तै देवनुडे वार्ताय देव बलनाय एनिनाल निंगल रचिप पडेवीर
सो इट डिपेंड्स ऑन इच वन ऑफ अर्स
आगवेय अद्दु नम्म ओवरेल पुर्तुम इरिकिरद नम्म पुर्त इरिकिरद
इट इस अप्लिकेबल तू चिल्ड्रन
अद्दु सिरप्पलिगल अद्दुल्लम सरी
अप्लिकेबल तू यंग पीपल
इद्दु वालीबरलकुम सरी
इट इस अप्लिकेबल तू स्मॉल गर्ल्स
इद्दु सरिया पेंटप्पलिगलकुम पुरुंदु
अप्लिकेबल तू यंग गर्ल्स
इदम वालीब सगोदरिगलकुम इद्दु पुरुंदु
फॉर ओल्डर सिस्टर्स ओल्डर ब्रदर्स
अल्लद मुदिन्द सगोदरिगलको सगोदरको इद्दु पुरुंदु
फॉर एवरीबॉडी
एलोरकुम सरी
वेदर यू आर यू आर बोन अगेन टुडे
निंगल इंटररचिक इंटररचिक पट्टन्नल्लम सरी
वेदर यू आर सेव्ड 30 इयर्स अगो
अल्लद 30 आणडुले कुंबाहर रचिक्य पट्टन्नल्लम सरी
दिस वर्ड विल हेल्प यू
इंद वार्ता अन्नत उंगलुके उदवु
आइदर इट विल हेल्प यू और इट विल हार्म यू
अद्दु वन्नु उंगलुके उदविसयुम अल्लद उंगलुके कष्टै कोडितडु
बट इट डिपेंड्स ऑन यू होव यू टेक इट
आनल अद्दु निंगल एप्पडी एट्टुकुलिगिल्लो अदैपुर्तद
इफ यू टेक इट इन डी राइट वे देन इट विल हेल्प यू
निंगल सरियान वहीले एट्टुकुलिगिर्न्दाल अद्दु उंगलुके उदविसयुम
बट इफ यू डू नॉट टेक इट इन डी राइट वे देन इट विल हार्म यू
निंगल सरियान एट्टुकुल्लवेन्दाल उंगलुके तिंग गुलविक्य
फॉर एग्जांपल
उदारनमाह
लेट इस टेक डी चिल्ड्रन
कुड़िनिले एट्टुकुल्ल
विल टॉक अबाउट चिल्ड्रन डी फैमिली सेशन
नम्म कुड़मकुड़हिले पिलिगले पच्ची पेसु
बट आई वांट जस्ट से वन एग्जांपल फॉर अबाउट चिल्ड्रन
आनल नान पिलिगले पच्ची ओरु उदारनति नान सल्लीरे
ओके योर योर पेरेंट्स आर आस्किंग यू तू डू सम्मिंग
उंगलुडे पेटोर उंगलाय ओरु कार्यति से सुर्गरांग
ओके नाउ यू हैव टू अल्टरनेटिव चॉइसेस
उंगलुके रेंड तेरीवर रुक रेंड वहील निंग सेयलान
आइदर
वन्नु
यू ओबे डी पेरेंट्स
अप्पा मसुरुद निंग केकलान किल्पडियलान
और
इल्लन्ना
यू डू नॉट ओबे
निंग अवर्ग किल्पडियामा पोकलान
अम्म मुडियाद अप्रम्पत आई गेनॉट डू इट आई वांट तू सी इट लेट
नान यद्दा सेम नान अप्रम्पत कर
नान वलयार रुक वर्ण मुडियाद आई एम प्लेइंग नाउ आई गेनॉट कम
नान वलयाडिट रिके नान वर्ण मुडियाद
ओके नाउ आई वांट तू आस्क यू क्वेश्चन नाउ डी चिल्ड्रन
इप्पन नान पिलिगले उंगला पत्त रुक केल्वी केक वर्ण
आई गेनॉट कम नाउ आई एम प्लेइंग
इनाल इप्पन वर्ण मुडियाद नान वलयाडिट रिके
इस डेट डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस
अद्दु सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशमा
इस डेट डी पॉवर ऑफ गॉड
अद्दु दान देवनुडे बलना
और इस डेट इस डेट इस डेट फुलिशनेस फॉर यू
अल्लद अद्दु उंगलुके पाइत्यमारी तुन्नद
टेल मी विच इस विच इस डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस तू ओबे योर पेरेंट्स और डिसऑबे योर पेरेंट्स विच इस डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस डेट इस व्हाट आई आस्क
सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशम नम्मी पाकरोल्ला अद्दु वंदु उंगल पेटोरुकनिंग किल्पडिरदा इल्ल किल्पडियामा इर्क्रद इद्दु
विच इस डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस टेल मी
सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशम इद्दु सुल्लंग
आई एम नॉट आस्किंग वेरी बिग क्वेश्चन टेल मी
नाउ
व्हाट किल्पडिरद इस व्हाट डेट इस डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस
अद्दु सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशम किल्पडिवे देन बद
ही इस एबल तू आंसर डेट क्वेश्चन गुड वेरी गुड
अवराल अद्दु कबल सलम मंजरुके नम्म नल्लद
यस डू यू अग्री विथ डेट बॉय व्हाट ही सेज
अवन सुनुरु निंग एट्टुकरिंगला
इस डेट डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस
अद्दु दान सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशमा
डेट व्हेन योर मम्मी इस कॉलिंग यू यू से यस मम्मी आई विल कम आई विल ओबे आई विल आई विल डू व्हाट यू आर आस्किंग मी तू डू डेट इस डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस इन योर लाइफ
अम्म उंगला कोपट रांग कोपट वने निंग अम्म अम्म नान वर्ण नान वंद वर्ण वंद सईरे नान किल्पडियान अप्पी निंग सुलरी पतिंगला निंग सईरी पतिंगला अद्दु दान सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशम
डेट इस डी वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस फॉर यू
अद्दु उंगलुकान अद्दु सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशम
एंड देन इट सेज देन व्हाट विल हैपन डिस वर्ड ऑफ डी डीस पॉवर ऑफ गॉड विल डू सम्मिंग
इंद देवनुडे बलन अद्दु उन्न सईद
डेट इस यू विल बी मोर एंड मोर सेव्ड इन योर लाइफ
इन्ना हुन्न उंग वाल्कीला अधिकम अधिकमान निंग रचिक्य पड़ु
डेट इस व्हाट इट सेज देन
अद्दु तांग सल्लपट रिके
वर्स 18
18 मसनत्तिले
लेन यू रीड डेन
रचिक्य पडिर नमको अद्देव बलनाय इरिकिरद
या डेट मींस यू विल बी यू विल बी लिल्ल मोर सेव्ड
अद्दु पुरुलन निंग इन्नु कोणज अधिकमार रचिक्य पड़ु
डेट इस व्हेन यू आर टेकिंग अप डेट वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस तू यू
अद्दु पुरुलन निंग अंद सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशमा अंद वार्ते निंग उंगलुकन एट्टुकिटिंग
इफ यू टेक अप टेक अप डेट वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस
अंद सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशस्त निंग उंगलुकन एट्टुकिटिंग
देन इट विल गिव यू अ लिटल बिट ऑफ सल्वेश
अप्पन उंगलुके कोणज रचिप कंडिपा कडेक्यो
नॉट फुल सल्वेश
मुलुर रचिपु कडेक्याद
सी गॉड वांट्स यू तू हैव डिस मच ऑफ सल्वेश इन योर लाइफ टाइम
अडोर वंद इवलो रचिप उंग वायनाल्ला इवलो रचिप निंग अडैकन्न अप्पी वर्ण
डिस मच ऑफ ग्लोरी डेट यू शुड हैव
इंद अलवुक महिमे उंग वायनाल्ला निंग अडैकन्न अडोर वर्ण
डिस मच ऑफ डी नेचर ऑफ जीसस यू शुड हैव
इंद अलव यस्त कृष्टुडे स्वाभम उंग वाल्कीले इर्क्रण सल्ली अडोर वर्ण
बट डेफॉर्म गॉड इस फर्मेनिंग सो में सिट्यूवेशन्स इन योर लाइफ
आगवेय दान उंग वाल्कीला अनेक सुलिनिगला देवन अनुमतिकर
एंड देन सच अ श्मौल थिंग कम कम हेयर एंड हेल्प मी इन डी किचन ओर गेट सम वाटर
सिन्न सिन्न कार्यंगल दान इवा वंद यान कोणज अडपडिलोद विसई तन्नी एट्टुकुड़ अप्पी निंग केकरद
एंड देन वर्ड ऑफ डी क्रॉस यू ओबे डेट एंड यू हेल्प योर मदर हेल्प योर फादर
सिल्वेय पट्रिय उपदेशंगरद निंग अद्दु किल्पडिंज अप्पा मम्मा अप्पा उक्कल अम्मा उक्कल
एंड देन वी कैन से डेट यू आर बीइंग सेव्ड लिटल बिट
अप्पे नान सल्लपट रिकुन्ना निंग कोणज रचिक्य पड़ु
अ लिटल बिट
कोणजमा
लिटल बिट इस लिटल बिट ऑफ सल्वेशन इस ऐडेड तू योर अकाउंट
उंगलुडे अकाउंटला उंगलुडे कनकला कोणज रचिप पड़पड़द
दिस दिस शुड बी डी योर टोटल अकाउंट
इद्दान उंगडे मुलु कनकारक
डिस मच ऑफ ग्लोरी यू शुड हैव
इंद अलवुक महिमे उंगलुके इर्कन
बट देन यू कांग गेट डिस मच इन वन डे
आना इवलो महिमे इवलो रचिप वरेनाल्ला निंग पट्टरुक
बट लिटल बिट यू गेट
आना कोणजमा उंगलुक कडेक्यो
वन मिलीमीटर ऑफ सल्वेशन यू गेट One millimeter of salvation you get.
Do you understand what Jesus said?
You get.
Do you understand what Jesus said?
That is the power of God.
Do you understand what Jesus said?
You will be saved like that again and again and again.
Do you understand what Jesus said?
But on the other hand.
Do you understand what Jesus said?
What is the other side of the picture?
Do you understand what Jesus said?
You say to your mother that you cannot obey.
Do you say to your mother that you cannot obey?
Or to your teacher.
Do you say to your teacher?
And then to your teacher, the teacher says, tells you not to copy and not to steal pencils and rubber from the other person.
Do you say to your teacher?
But then when you say, okay, I will not copy and I will not steal things from my classmates, you are taking up that word of the cross in your life.
Do you say to your teacher?
So then little bit, little more salvation comes to your life.
Do you say to your teacher?
Okay.
Do you say to your teacher?
But what is the other side?
Do you say to your teacher?
That means you don't obey.
Do you say to your teacher?
You don't listen to your mother.
Do you say to your mother?
And then you are doing whatever you want.
Do you say to your mother?
I am very busy, I cannot come and help you now.
Do you say to your mother?
I cannot get water for you.
Do you say to your mother?
I cannot look at that milk which is getting boiled, I cannot do your look after all that.
Do you say to your mother?
And then what happens?
Do you say to your mother?
It is what mother says is a foolishness for you.
Do you say to your mother?
I cannot do all that.
Do you say to your mother?
And therefore, then what will happen? What does the Bible say?
Do you say to your mother? Do you say to your mother?
So you are little bit, you are perishing.
Do you say to your mother?
Do you know that?
Do you understand that?
Do you understand that? That you are perishing little bit, now that you are dead completely.
Do you say to your mother?
But little bit of.
Do you say to your mother?
In your spirit, some infection comes.
Do you say to your mother?
It is like in our body, you know, some type of a cut comes.
Do you say to your mother?
And then if you are neglecting that, then pus will come, then infection will come, then doctor will say you had to cut off the whole hand.
Do you say to your mother?
So in other words, you are becoming, you are perishing, 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 inch by inch, millimeter by millimeter.
Do you say to your mother?
So who is deciding?
Do you say to your mother?
Who is deciding?
Do you say to your mother?
I am not deciding whether you are being saved or you are being perishing. I don't decide.
Do you say to your mother?
And the elders cannot decide that.
Do you say to your mother?
If I can say, even God cannot decide that.
Do you say to your mother?
That decision is taken by you.
Do you say to your mother?
You are taking that decision.
Do you say to your mother?
Okay, now let us leave the children.
Do you say to your mother?
Let us talk about young people.
Do you say to your mother?
I am going to speak to the young people in the afternoon.
Do you say to your mother?
But one example I will just say.
Do you say to your mother?
All your friends are saying, okay, do like this and, you know, let us all go, have some party, let us have some fun together.
Do you say to your mother?
And then they may, they may say, okay, after the eating and drinking, we will go out for a film.
Do you say to your mother?
And then, now the word of the cross is coming to your heart.
Do you say to your mother?
Do not, when your friends ask you to go that way, my son do not agree.
Do you say to your mother?
Do you know that verse? How many of you know that verse?
Do you know that verse?
Do you know that verse?
Do you know that verse?
Young people, do you know that verse?
Do you know that verse?
Very, very important verse that you should never forget.
Do you say to your mother?
Tell me, anybody who knows that?
Do you say to your mother?
Anybody knows?
Do you say to your mother?
Any young person, young person?
Do you say to your mother?
Or young girl, tell me.
Do you say to your mother? Do you say to your mother?
Where?
She is saying, love of the world, she is saying.
Love of the?
Love of the world, she is saying.
Love of the world, no, 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 no.
Do you say to your mother?
Yeah, any idea? Nobody knows. It's a very, very important verse that you should never forget.
Do you say to your mother?
All young people.
Do you say to your mother?
Proverbs, Chapter 1, Verse 10.
Do you say to your mother?
Okay, think of that, read that verse.
Do you say to your mother?
Do not agree with them.
Do you say to your mother?
Do not agree with them.
Do you say to your mother?
I am speaking to the young people now.
Do you say to your mother?
The word of the cross.
Do you say to your mother?
Word of the cross for the young people.
Do you say to your mother?
When your classmates are asking you to do something.
Do you say to your classmates?
To the boys, they say, okay, let us go with our girlfriends.
Do you say to your boys?
And to the girlfriends, they will say, now call, I am bringing my boyfriend.
Do you say to your boys?
So you find that when all these things happen.
Do you say to your boys?
What does the word of the cross come?
Do you say to your boys?
What is the word of the cross?
Do you say to your boys?
Verse 10.
Verse 10.
What is that verse?
What is that verse?
Read that.
Read that.
Any young person, can you read that verse?
Do you say to your boys?
One young person, one young person, young boy or young girl, please read it.
Do you say to your boys?
Yeah. So then if they are trying to entice you, to attract you, do not consent, do not agree.
Do you say to your boys?
So that is the word of the cross.
Do you say to your boys?
And then when you do not agree to that.
Do you say to your boys?
Then little bit of salvation comes in your life.
Do you say to your boys?
Little bit of salvation comes.
Do you say to your boys?
On the other hand.
Do you say to your boys?
You join with them.
Do you say to your boys?
You join with them.
Do you say to your boys?
You agree with them.
Do you say to your boys?
And you consent with them.
Do you say to your boys?
And then you go with them.
Do you say to your boys?
And then what will happen?
Do you say to your boys?
A little bit of perishing will take place in your life.
Do you say to your boys?
Little bit of perishing will come into your life.
Do you say to your boys?
Who is responsible?
Do you say to your boys?
I am not responsible.
Do you say to your boys?
The elders are not responsible.
Do you say to your boys?
God is not responsible.
Do you say to your boys?
Not even the devil is responsible.
Do you say to your boys?
The whole responsibility is in you.
Do you say to your boys?
Because you did not take the word of the cross.
Do you say to your boys?
Somebody comes and, somebody, a girl writes a note to you once.
Do you say to your boys?
I love you.
Do you say to your boys?
Finished.
Do you say to your boys?
I love you.
Do you say to your boys?
Any girl.
Do you say to your boys?
And then you just fall for it.
Do you say to your boys?
The word of the cross comes.
Do you say to your boys?
Definitely.
Do you say to your boys?
If you have come to the church and sat in one meeting like this.
Do you say to your boys?
Word of the cross will come.
Do you say to your boys?
The Holy Spirit will definitely speak to you.
Do you say to your boys?
My son.
Do you say to your boys?
Just tear it off.
Do you say to your boys?
Burn it.
Do you say to your boys?
Not even give a reply.
Do you say to your boys?
Forget about it.
Do you say to your boys?
And pray that that girl will never do it again.
Do you say to your boys?
Then some salvation will come.
Do you say to your boys?
Then some salvation will come.
Do you say to your boys?
The opposite also can come.
Do you say to your boys?
The boy, your classmate, your boy will write to you.
Do you say to your boys?
I love you.
Do you say to your boys?
And then what you will do?
Do you say to your boys?
The word of the cross comes into your heart.
Do you say to your boys?
What you have learned in your youth meetings?
Do you say to your boys?
What you have learned in the Sunday class?
Do you say to your boys?
What you have learned in the church?
Do you say to your boys?
What you have learned in the youth conference?
Do you say to your boys?
You remember all these things into your heart.
Do you say to your boys?
Holy Spirit is very faithful to speak to you.
Do you say to your boys?
But then you say, no, 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 no. So a boy is telling me, who?
Do you say to your boys? Do you say to your boys?
It is so difficult to get a good marriage partner these days.
Do you know that it is difficult to get a good marriage partner?
And this boy is very nice boy.
Do you know that?
And this boy is writing, I love you.
Do you say to your boys?
Ah, yes, 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 mommy cannot understand.
Do you say to your boys?
Daddy cannot understand all these.
Do you say to your boys?
And these elders cannot understand anything.
Do you say to your boys?
They are worse than the parents.
Do you say to your boys?
Why are you laughing? You are thinking like that, that's why you are laughing.
Do you say to your boys?
So, why should I listen to them?
Do you say to your boys?
Okay, don't listen to them.
Do you say to your boys?
Then what will happen?
Do you say to your boys?
You go that way.
Do you say to your boys?
And you try to talk to him.
Do you say to your boys?
And you try to have some relationship with him.
Do you say to your boys?
And then what will happen?
Do you say to your boys?
Some perishing will come.
Do you say to your boys?
Some perishing will come.
Do you say to your boys?
Some perishing will come.
Do you say to your boys?
More perishing will come.
Do you say to your boys?
And finally, you have no other alternative but to get married to that fellow.
Do you say to your boys?
And then you find that your whole married life is at the verge of divorce.
Do you say to your boys?
Who is responsible?
Do you say to your boys?
Is the elders responsible?
Do you say to your boys?
We are not responsible.
Do you say to your boys?
Who is responsible?
Do you say to your boys?
Don't blame God, God is not responsible.
Do you say to your boys?
And do you think devil is responsible?
Do you say to your boys?
Devil is not responsible.
Do you say to your boys?
You are responsible.
Do you say to your boys?
You are responsible for your salvation, you are responsible for your perishing.
Do you say to your boys?
That is what the Bible says.
Do you say to your boys?
For some people, the word of the cross comes and you want to perish.
Do you say to your boys?
But for some people, the word of the cross comes and they fear. Yes, Lord, I want to obey that word of the cross.
Do you say to your boys?
Okay, now let us leave the children and the young people.
Do you say to your boys?
Let us go to the married people.
Do you say to your boys?
And then the brothers and sisters who are sitting here on the chair.
Do you say to your boys?
And then the word of the cross come.
Do you say to your boys?
The way in which you spoke to your wife today morning was not correct.
Do you say to your boys?
Word of the cross comes.
Do you say to your boys?
And the word of the cross is coming.
Do you say to your boys?
Or yesterday, the way in which you spoke to your wife was not right.
Do you say to your boys?
Or the way in which you spoke to your husband in a disrespectful way today morning was wrong.
Do you say to your boys?
And the word of the cross is coming.
Do you say to your boys?
The word of the cross is coming to you.
Do you say to your boys?
And then the word of the cross is coming.
Do you say to your boys?
It is left to you.
Do you say to your boys?
The word of the cross is coming.
Do you say to your boys?
Go and apologize and go and ask forgiveness to your partner.
Do you say to your boys?
Word of the cross is coming.
Do you say to your boys?
And you are saying, yes, Lord, I will obey that and I will go and apologize to my boy.
Do you say to your boys?
And when you, some of you will go and do it.
Do you say to your boys?
And then some salvation will come.
Do you say to your boys?
That is what the Bible says.
Do you say to your boys?
Some amount of salvation will come.
Do you say to your boys?
Little bit of salvation will come.
Do you say to your boys?
But on the other hand, no, 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 all those things are unimportant.
Do you say to your boys?
All these things are unimportant.
Do you say to your boys?
And then you just leave it.
Do you say to your boys?
And then what will happen?
Do you say to your boys?
That unforgiveness, that bitterness will grow and grow and grow and grow.
Do you say to your boys?
And then you have got that bitterness towards your wife.
Do you say to your boys?
And then you have got some unforgiveness towards your wife.
Do you say to your boys?
And then the wife also is having why, you know, he has never apologized to me, he has never apologized to me, he has never apologized to me.
Do you say to your boys?
And then the distance between you and your wife will become increase and increase and increase and increase.
Do you say to your boys?
And then the distance will become more and more and more and more.
Do you say to your boys?
One day, a day will come.
Do you say to your boys?
You are not divorced.
Do you say to your boys?
But you live like a divorced person.
Do you say to your boys?
You may say, you may say so many things to the elders and the brothers.
Do you say to your boys?
But your children will find out immediately.
Do you say to your boys?
Mommy and papa are not happy with one another.
Do you say to your boys?
And they are not talking with one another.
Do you say to your boys?
And your children will find out immediately.
Do you say to your boys?
So what is happening is.
Do you say to your boys?
So you are getting perished.
Do you say to your boys?[1553.76]
The father is getting perished.
Appa kette pararay.
The mother is getting perished.
Amavam kette paranga.
The children are also getting perished.
Pillaingala, kette podo.
Who is responsible?
Yar karano?
Don't blame God.
Devan, ninni, putrasattanay.
God is not responsible.
Devan, adhukporupala.
Don't blame the elders.
Ninni, muparagala, putrasattanay.
They are not responsible.
Muparagala, adhukporupala.
Don't even blame the devil.
Saathanuguna, ninni, putrasattanay.
Because devil also is not responsible for that.
Saathanukku, adhukporupala.
You are responsible for that.
Ningaladan, adharka karanam, ningaladan, adhukporupu.
The word of the cross has come very clearly to you.
Devanude, varthianadu, ungeta, teliivavadu.
And you are not willing to ask forgiveness and apologize to that person.
Nenya, avuithita payi, mannepekette, na, mannechirana, oru manakastan, ninni kekharadukku, ninga, thayaraha, illai.
You are not responsible for that.
Ninga, adhukporupala, porupala, ninni, edhathikala, ninni, karanama, ninni, adhathikala.
Take another example for the elders.
Innoor, kariyata, uparagalakaka, salabadiyam?
Ah, we, I know, to the older people, I mean.
Ah, mannekevum, ah, vaidhamvaidhavam, ungalakaka, na salabadiyam?
Ah, for example, in the money transactions.
Udhanamaga, panna vikharangala.
You know, I have found that this is one of the big problems in villages.
Na, pathrakay, indha, graamangala, gurmiha, periyavatru, prashniyadhurukku.
You, you borrow money.
Nenya, kada mangala.
And you don't give it back.
Nenya, adhuthiruma, kodukama, arkala.
And then you get into all types of problems.
Ol, narayya, prashniyadhurukku.
And then you borrow from somebody else and give it to this person.
Nenya, kada mangi, ivatthiruma, kada nakattuvay.
What does the Bible say?
Veda enna sodeladu.
Do you know the word of the cross for that?
Silaviyavatru ubadesam, adhukene, thirima?
Do you know the word of the cross regarding money transactions?
Panna vikharangalakkus, silaviyavatryu ubadesam, enna, ungalakthirima?
People don't fear God.
Makal, devanak, baiappadradhaila.
People don't fear God's word.
Makal, devanude, varthaki, baiappadradhaila.
Therefore, people just take it lightly.
Ahave, romba, laysaidhathiparanga.
It says in Romans chapter thirteen.
Romer, padimuntra madhikaram.
Romans chapter thirteen.
Romer, padimuntra madhikaram.
Verse eight, it says.
Eighta vasnatlai var sodelapattirukku. Oruvadathil, oruvar, anbuhoorira, kada ney, ellamal, matronrilum, oruvanakkum, kadaan padadhirngal.
What Bible says very clearly.
Vedam, mika, teliivaga, soliiradu.
In no matter, you should be in debt.
Onrilum, ningal, kadaan padirkakoodaadu.
You should never have a debt to anybody else.
Ningal, yarukku, kadaan padirkavay, koodaadu.
Except in relation to love.
Anbu, andha kariyathavara, varilai, eme, kadaan padirkukku.
That means, I have got a debt to love this brother.
Adhukporulena, enna, enakku, rava, kadaan padirkay, oru, nesikim, madikim, na, kadaan padirkay, kandipanu, oru, sodelathanu.
That is all right.
Adhukseri, adhukseri.
That one debt we can all have.
Andha, anbu sodelathavadi, kadaan, namakvandhaya, arakala.
That, I have to give it back, I have to give it back, I have to give it back, I have to, I have to give back to God.
Antiruma sodelathanu, thiruma sodelathanu, anbu, thiruma sodelathanu, devanta sodelathanu na?
Because God loved me so much.
Yen, devanene, miho, nesitha.
Therefore, I have to give back that love.
Ahave, apadipattan, me, na, minduma, kandhikana.
And then this brother has loved me so much and therefore I have to give it back to him.
Indha sagavane, miho, adhikamaha, nesithara, ahave, andha, anbu, na, thiruma, kandhikana.
My wife has loved me so much and therefore I have to give it back to her.
En, manaviva, miho, nesikiranga, ahave, andha, anbu, na, ungalakthiruma, kandhikana.
That is a, that is a good debt that we can have.
Adhuk, mika, thirunda, oru, nallavu, kadaanadu.
No other debt is permissible in God's word.
An, adhavara, devanude, vartha, edhulai, eme, kadaan padakoodaadu.
Now, remember, we are talking about the word of the cross, which is a power.
Nengal, marabrima, niaavu, kosikana, namas, silaviyavatru, ubadesa, patthi, peshitrukku, adhuk, devavala, arakku.
So this is the word of the cross.
Ahidu da, andha, silaviyavatru ubadesam.
You should not have any debts.
Endhovar, kadaanum, padirkavay, nayel, koodaadu, kadaan padavay, koodaadu.
That is what the Bible says.
Adhaidan, vedam, soliiradu.
Why?
Yen?
Why you should not borrow?
Yen, ningal, kadaan mangakoodaadu?
Read this verse in Proverbs chapter twenty-two.
Idhene, ningal, vasikalam, neevimurikal, ivathirandam, madhikaram.
Never ever forget it in your life.
Indha vasnatli, ningal, oruvadu, marandrave, koodaadu.
Never ever forget it in your life.
Ningal, vaalkaladu, vasnatli, marandrave, koodaadu.
Proverbs chapter twenty-two, verse seven.
Neevimurikal, ivathirandam, madhikaram, yehram vasanam.
Pudding.
Ayesirevan, darithirani, aadikiran, kadaan, vanginavan, kadaan, koduthavanakkum, adimai.
The borrower becomes the lender's slave.
Kadaan, vanginavan, kadaan, koduthavanakkum, adimai.
Like, for example, if I borrow some money from Wesley.
Udhanamaga, naan, Wesley, amirundu, kadaan, vangiinal.
And then I am the borrower.
Appa, naan, kadaan, vanginavan.
And he is the lender.
Avar, kadaan, koduthavat.
And therefore, this borrower, that is me, is becoming a slave of Brother Wesley.
Ahave, naan, kadaan, vangiinaan, indha, sagavadakak, naan, adimai, ahiudikirin.
Immediately, I become a debtor to him.
Naan, avar, kadaan padan, ahiudikirin, odana.
And then I am a slave. Bible says, under the inspiration of the Holy Spirit, Bible calls you a slave.
Paristhaavayudha, undhalodhu, vedam, ungalai, adimai, endre, alakiradu.
It's a very, very, very serious word.
Idhemi, mika, 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 ningal, serioustha, edhathikolavadi, kariyam.
That is the word of the cross.
Adhuk, thiruvayavatru ubadesam.
The word of the cross.
Silaviyavatru ubadesam.
Dear Lord, I don't want to be a slave of a person.
En, kandvan, aandavare, na, yarukku, naan, undha, adimai, aha, maara, virmave, illai.
Why you should not become a slave?
Yen, ningal, adimai, aha, maara, koodaadu?
There is a reason for that.
Adharku, oru, karanam, irikiradu.
First Corinthians.
Onju, korindhir.
Chapter seven.
Yehram madhikaram.
Very, very important verse.
Mika, 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 mukkayamana, vasanam.
Why we should never become a slave of another human being?
Yen, innor, manidadukku, naam, adimai, aha, koodaadu?
You should never become a slave of another person.
Naam, machor, nabarukku, adimai, aha, vay, koodaadu?
Why we should never become a slave of another person?
Yen, naam, machor, nabarukku, naam, adimai, aha, vay, koodaadu?
First Corinthians, chapter seven, verse twenty-three.
Onju, korindhir, yehram madhikaram, ivathimuntra, vasanam.
You were bought with a price, do not become slaves of men.
Ningal, karayathukku, kolapattik, kolapattirikal, manusharukku, adimai, lagaadhirngal.
Yes, if you are born again.
Ningal, marabrimai, perandipirikal, andral.
If you are born again.
Ningal, mindumai, perandipirikal, andral.
You are washed by the blood of Christ.
Ningal, esukristvin, rathathinaali, kalupattiripirikal, andral.
If you have become a child of God.
Ningal, devanude, play, mariipirikal, andral.
You have been bought by the precious blood of Christ.
Ningal, esukristvin, udai, andha, velayapattirathathinaali, meetkapattirikal.
That is what it says in verse twenty-three.
Adhaidan, ningal, karayathukku, kolapattirikal, sodelapattirikadu.
You were bought with a price.
Ningal, karayathukku, oru, vilayukku, vilayukku, meetukkolapattirikal, kolapattirikal. Adhene, sodelapattirikadu, angi?
Do not become slaves of men.
Yarukku, endha, manusharukku, adimai, lagaadhirngal.
Do not become slaves of men.
Manusharukku, adimai, lagaadhirngal.
When you borrow money.
Ningal, kadaan, mangumbodhu.
Whether you like it or not, you are a slave of men.
Ungalakukku, piditalam, sirip, pidikavitalam, sirin, ningal, manusharukku, adimai, laga, mariudikirin.
That is what the Bible says.
Adhaidan, vedam, soliiradu.
I am not talking about borrowing in an emergency.
Oru, oru, kasthatla, oru, kadaan, kadaan, maasunle, la, kadaan, mangrathu, na, sodelala?
In an emergency.
Orati, avasimana, nairathala.
I remember once I went to a bank.
Udhanamaga, oruvan, na, vangiukku, payirkay.
It was such a, such a important matter.
Andhur, mika, mukkayamana, oru, kariyam.
And at that time, there were, there were no ATM booths or anything like that.
Andha kathlela, ATM, la, kadayadu.
And then I went to the bank and the bank, it was a holiday.
Ah, bank, umana, bank, le, uttanga.
And I had to buy some milk powder for my son.
Inudaya, chida, payanak, na, vandhu, palpoor, wine, taravendu, chiy.
And then I didn't have money.
Appa, enta, panamilla.
Then I borrowed.
Appa, naan, kadaan, mangane.
Borrowed from another brother.
Innoor, sagavadakata, payi, kadaan, mangane.
I bought hundred rupees from him.
Noorba, atta, kadaan, mangane.
And on Monday morning, I gave it back to him.
Nenya, kalam, kaalela, aandavare, adhuthiruma, koduthite.
And Saturday, I borrowed and Monday, I returned to him.
Sanikalam, kadaan, mangane, ninni, kalam, thiruma, koduthite.
See, I am not referring to such emergencies.
Appadi, patta, athiavasimana, sunlela, na, sodelala.
But even in that, the Lord rebuked me severely on Monday.
An, appadi, patta, karanathla, kariyathla, kooda, karanathla, kooda, devanene, ninni, kalam, ninni, kalam.
Why didn't you plan enough with your wife, whether you have got enough milk powder at home for your child?
Yen, munadhiye, unga, manaviva, thirin, thitamidala, avu, pillaikang, palpoor, irkani, yen, ni, pakala, unki.
Why are you waiting for the last minute on Saturday?
Yen, kadaisi, nimshavare, kus, sanikalam, kathirtirukka?
Why didn't you, why didn't you check and why didn't you buy that on Thursday or Friday?
Yen, nenya, idhikana, pakala, oru, vialakalamya, olikalamya, pathirkalamay?
And then you waited for Saturday?
Nen, sanikalam, marikin, kathirtirin.
Saturday, bank is there up to twelve o'clock.
Sanikalam, bank, idhikaran, seethu, panandam, nari, kumadiyano?
So I went at eleven o'clock.
Ni, padanam, madhikippona?
It was a bank holiday.
Appa, bank, moditanga.
And it was a holiday.
And, appa, vandhu, vudimana, nala, poch.
I didn't know that.
Enakka, thiriyam, poch.
So that was an emergency.
Adhumi, ho, orati, avasimana, oru, nairam.
So do not, do not, you know, feel condemned because in such emergencies, you may have to borrow, even then, we can judge ourselves.
Appadi, patta, nairathala, ningal, romba, aakina, adayavanta, an, appi, namani, ayandhitukorun.
And then if you are borrowing money for buying a vehicle or bank, from the bank, to build a house.
Aladu, ningal, oru, vaganakadaanu, illa, vittukadaanu, vittukadaanukka, kadaanu, vangiina?
Then that is not a debt.
Vangiila, vangbo, adhuvare, kadaanala?
Because if you are not giving back that money from, to the bank.
Yen, na, ningal, vangi, kadaan, thiruma, bank, katalana?
That government authorities will come and take off that vehicle or that house.
Arasakariyari, avangavandhu, andha, vittalak, andha, vandhi, edhathipiravanga.
And therefore, it is not a debt actually.
Aladu, vittaya, jattipanidvanga, an, ahave, adhuvandhu, oru, kadaan, kadayadu.
But then what is a debt which I am referring to?
Ahave, na, sodela, kadaan, abringiradu, enna?
The debt is, you know, you live more than what you are able to live.
Ningal, ungalala, vaalamunindhi, kattilum, andha, thakadhi, kattilum, adhikamaha, ningal, vaivadu.
You know, you have got only one meter of clothes.
Unghita, oru, meter, thuridha, arakku.
And then you cannot, you cannot stitch a shirt that would require one and a half meter of clothes.
Adavachi, one, rameter, alavula, oru, sattai, ningakakamidiyadu.
You cannot, that is sensible.
Adhuk, arivana, kariyam, aam, ungalal, pannamidiyadu, kandip.
And then you go and tell the tailor, no, 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 that and all, I don't know, there is only one meter, but you, you stitch a shirt for me.
Nen, sapit, aattas, soli, idhuv, oru, meter, tha, arakka, na, one, rameter, vaalavu, thurivavala, katschikudugun, sodelingay.
You don't, some or the other.
Nen, appriya, saiyavun, soliri.
And the tailor will say, I cannot do it.
Tailor, soriduvar, alam, na, pannamidiyadu, soriduvar.
I had to attach another half, half a meter cloth for something else.
Na, machakasala, kariyengalaka, anga, innor, arameter, thuridhutha, na, katpani, illa, portan, takamidiyam?
So that will be a dirty shirt.
Appa, thur, romba, oru, kala, maana, oru, sattaya, pero, nalavi, akadu, pakaradu.
Then people will laugh at you.
Makalala, ungalak, paasri, paang, sattai, pothal.
Therefore, dear brothers and sisters, please understand this.
Ahave, en, kandvan, sagavadak, sagavadikala, idhukurujikinyan?
Will you take a decision today?
Nen, ine, kordthirman, edhupingala?
Will you take a decision today?
Indra, kordthirman, edhupingala?
Lord, I will never borrow in my life from today onwards.
Devane, naan, kandipak, kadaan, mangavay, matti, innelandhu, ungalak, vangi, naan, kadaan, mangavay, matti.
I don't have one piece of debt today as I speak.
Na, inni, ipa, peshitrukken, ipa, vangita, oru, paisa, kooda, naan, kadaan, vangi.
That was only debt I had.
Andhuma, atta, na, appa, vangana, andhuma, than, kadaan, aran.
I settled it in two days.
Renanala, that, nathinavak, sodelathite.
So you find that, that should be the testimony that we should have.
Namakirkavadi, saachya, appadi, patta, thayikavadi.
The word of the cross is that.
Silaviyavatru ubadesam, adhuvada.
When I, when I got married.
En, thirmana, manabodhu?
I didn't have enough money.
En, kitta, podumana, panai, illa.
And I didn't want to ask my parents and my brothers.
Ya, pettoru, tayu, sagavadakal, tayu, na, kekavaramla.
I didn't want to, I had six brothers above me.
Enakku, meela, aar, aar, sagavadakal, thirundanga.
I didn't want to ask any one of them.
Na, avuithila, kekana, na, virmala.
And I didn't want to ask my parents.
En, pettoru, tayu, na, kekavaramla.
Because I didn't marry according to what they suggested and all that.
Yen, avunga, enakku, sonnapadi, na, thir, na, thirumanasankikala, avunga, enakku, sonnapadi?
I married as per God's will.
Na, devanu, dispathin, buddy, thirumanasankikita.
And therefore, I didn't have a, I didn't have enough money to have a gala marriage.
Ahave, bramanda, maana, oru, thirumanan, nathatham, badi, kentapana, illa.
Therefore, I had a very simple marriage.
Ahave, oru, elimi, thirumanan, thirumanan, thirumanan.
Why?
Yen?
Because I decided.
Yen, na, thir, na, thirmanam, panna?
When I got married, I decided that I will never borrow.
Na, thirumanam, panna, boh, na, thirumanam, panna, yen, na, kadaan, vangakoodaadu, abring.
I will not borrow money and conduct my wedding.
Na, kadaan, vangi, ungalad, thirumanathin, nathathavi, matti.
I will not marry.
Na, kadainavai, pannikam, arapadukku.
That is a decision I did.
Appadi patta thirmanathanai edutai.
So we had a very simple marriage.
Ahavi engal koru rabba elimiana oru thirmanananduch.
I am very happy about it, I have no regrets about it even today.
Adavachchi na romba sandoshipatray, adavachchi peenugavat, neekavat gudanu varthameela.
Because I took a stand.
Yeah, na appur thirman edutai?
Because I said I will not become a slave of men.
Yeah, naa solenam manushanukorunna adhimiyaha mattain.
Dear Lord, you are the one who bought me.
Andavre, ninga enakriyathukumitukondinga.
And therefore I will never become a, a slave to people.
Ahavi namansharkukorubodhu adhimiyaha vey matti.
So beloved brothers, beloved sisters, never become a slave to anybody.
Ahavi enakannana sahodarakale sahodarikale yaarukum adhimipadadurigal.
People are not willing to have a simple marriage, you know, reason, you know the reason for that?
Makalakke ipala elimiyaga thirmanampanadu deppidikavale, kana ungal tereema?
Because they seek honor.
Yeah, na ungal mariyadu teva ganan teva.
They seek honor from people.
Makalathirunna mariyadu edupakaranga.
You know what Jesus said about seeking honor?
Mariyadu edupathu thuridhu, ganathu edupathu idhu, yes, enasunna thirima?
In John chapter five.
Yovanayindha madhikaram.
Never forget it in this verse.
Indha vasanathirinna marandraya vendha.
John chapter five.
Yovanayindha madhikaram.
Verse forty-four.
Naapatti naan kam vasanam.
Yeah.
Devanale maathrambarikira mahimey teedamel, oruvaral oruvar mahimey ettu kodiira ningal, yappadi visvasipirhal?
You cannot even be a believer if you seek honor from people.
Ningal makalathirunna mahimey teedningana, ninga oru visvasiya kudakamudiyadu.
That is what the Bible says.
Adha na vedan solledu.
You cannot, please listen to me, dear brothers, dear sisters, please listen to me.
Enakannana sahodarasaahodarikale daivasini, neenavunchikela.
Forget about becoming a disciple.
Or shishana aravatila marandruma madhala.
Forget about building the church.
Savay kattana marandha, apparam pathikala.
Apparam pathikala, correct. That's all, let us wait for all that.
Adhikala nam paruthirupo.
Oh, I want to build the church.
Na savay kattaparay.
Please wait.
Konja kaathirunga.
I want to follow the Lord.
Na andavre quinbatraparay.
Please wait.
Konja kaathirunga.
I want to be a disciple.
Na or shishana arakvarumbra.
Please wait.
Konja kaathirunga.
You cannot even become a believer.
Ni mala visvasiyave maramudiyadu.
If you seek honor from one another.
Ortha thirunna ortha thirunna, ni mariyadu edupathikunavichingala, ni visvasiya, visvasiyave maramudiyadu.
If you seek honor and if you do anything to, in order to get honor from, respect from people, dignity from your community and your relatives, then you cannot even become a believer.
Ninga ganathu edupathingana, makalathirunna ganathu edupathavam, nam mariyadu kudukana, nam zari sarana nam madhikana, appri na edupathani ona sanjigana, ninga devantavaru visvasiya kudakamudiyadu.
It is impossible.
Adhik, adu mudiyave mudiyadu, kudaadu kariyam.
For my wedding reception, my boss also came.
Inudaya thirmana varavirpakkay, inudaya basavandha, uyerikariyavandharu.
Uh, my colleagues came.
Inudakudalavakalangalandanga.
My brothers and sisters came.
Inudasaahodarasaahodarikala andanga.
And then the church brothers and sisters came.
Savayulathasaahodarasaahodarikala andanga.
They all saw, they all saw everything.
Avungalo yellamida.
I am sure they all would have laughed at me in their hearts.
Enakthiriya avungala, tangodai irathila, enai pathshirichirupanga.
They would not, they would not laugh at me publicly because they all respected me.
Vedi padaya pathshrikata, shrikata kudana, manne madhikiranganala, nee pathshirikamudiyadu.
But they would have, they would have laughed at me in their hearts.
Na ulagashirichirupanga, path.
What is this?
Yeah, na idala?
Like that, but I decided, Lord, I am not going to seek the honor from people.
Anana naa mudiyapannay, andavre na manushanaktrindhu, na mahimey edupakamattain, ganathu edupakamattain.
Because then I cannot even be a believer.
Yeah, na appri edupathina, na oru visvasiya kudakamudiyadu.
Now we know, whether I was saved or they were saved.
Na retshikupattikana, laavunga retshikupattikangala, nam dvi shitla.
I know where they are now and I know where I am now.
Ipayenakthiriyo, avunga epengaarganga, na engarkeen sol.
After thirty years, after the wedding.
Inudathirmanamahi, muppadaandhakalithe.
And then now I know where they are and where I am.
Ipayenakthiriyo, avunga engarganga, na engarkeen.
Where their family life is and where my family life is.
Avungodekudumvalke engarke, enudadekudumvalke engarke.
I know where their children are and where my children are.
Avungodekpligal engarke, enudadekpligal engarke.
And how I am serving God and how they are serving the devil.
Na yappadi devanakoodiyaseeray, avunga yappadi pisasakoodiyaseeranga.
I, I didn't know that thirty years ago.
Muppadaandhakalikum baakaranke tiriyadu.
But now I know after thirty years.
Anana muppadaarshin kalisipayenakthiriyo.
It all started with small, 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 small decisions, my dear brothers and sisters.
Ninga edukarasina, sinna, 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 sinna mudiyugalda, enakannana sahodarasaahodarikale.
You are either perishing or you are saving.
Ningal one nakettupogamudiyam, illati retshikupadamudiyam.
You are either being saved or you are being, uh, being perishing.
Ninga one retshikupadamudiyam, aladu ninga adindukotha kettupogamudiyam.
It all depends on you.
Adu ungalapurtathu da.
Don't blame the elders, don't blame God, don't blame the devil.
Muppadaandhakalakutrasattadinga, devanakutrasattadinga, saathani kutrasattadinga.
If you are seeking honor from people, you will perish.
Manushanaktrindhu mariyadu, mahimey ganathu edupathikina, ninga adindu damboing.
Unless you repent.
Ni manandrimbalana?
Unless you repent today.
Ni innaki manandrimbalana?
Just like borrowing money.
Yappadi ninga kadhanvangkudada, andhakatla, manandrimbalana?
Doesn't matter, God doesn't talk about the past.
Devan vandu porupadtraila, or vandu kadhanakalakunnavu kuraadu kadeyadu.
Lord, he is talking to you today.
Devan ungiita innaki dam pesrar.
If you, if you hear God's voice today, do not hurt in your heart.
Indrike devanodeksette kapeerila, ahi, ungal edithetekadina paduthathirigal.
And therefore you say that, the Lord, Lord, I don't want to borrow anymore.
Ahavi, ni devanta solna, devanina idhimay kadhanvangavirumbala andavre.
Dear Lord, I don't want to, I don't want to borrow, I don't want to seek honor from people.
Devaneenam na vandu kadhanpattavumbala, na vandu makalathirunna mahimey ettu kudavumbala.
And then all of, all of us are keeping the, the cellphone, all of us have.
Namayelarteyo cellphone taruk.
Whether young people or older people.
Sriavagala thanasri, periavagala thanasri.
All of us have.
Illorukku cellphone nuchirup.
The word of the cross comes.
Silivay patru badesam varid.
Again, word of the cross is coming.
Silivay patru badesam angavard.
Word of the cross is coming.
Silivay patru badesam marikiradu.
Now be very careful how you are using your cellphone.
Niipar romba gavanna markano, yappadi oru phone nee use pannikitkay.
You had to be very, very, very careful.
Ni mikamikamikamikam, gavanna markano.
All types of advertisements come.
Illamida mana, mosamana advertisement adkuluvaru.
And then different, different, you know, enticing pictures will come.
Anegaya irkakudiyakavandhalakudiyapadangalanga varu.
You know, you are not really seeking for that, but ads come.
Ni adavay taada neepala, anaa adhitaana varu.
Advertisements come.
Narayevilambargalitaana varu.
And then it all depends on you, whether you are pressing that or not.
Appadu ungalapurtathuk, ninga andha vilambargalala thodringala illa abindisa.
Many of us use computers in our, in our house.
Namuday vittugala, anegara, namakomputres pandro.
Especially, you know, those of you are involved in that and you, you, you use your computer, I use my computer very often.